When we get to acknowledge the students and their great achievements. So, that being said, all right. Thank you, everybody, for here. We're going to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, student and staff recognition. A one, so many great achievements, so thank you very much. Beth, you ready?
Yes. Okay. So tonight, there's an awful lot to celebrate tonight, obviously. Look at everybody. PMS music students are recognized for their excellence in participation in the Rhode Island All-State Band Orchestra and Choruses. The All-State Band Orchestras and Choruses featured students from PMS in grades seven and eight, performed at the Vets on Sunday, March 24th, 2024. The choruses began the day at 10:00 a.m., followed by the band at 3:00, and finally orchestra at 7:00 that night. Students prepared for several months ahead of time and auditioned for Judge, Judge One, for the judge, Sunday in November. Students from all over the state auditioned, and only those with the highest scores were selected. PMS is proud of the following students for making this year's All-State Band Orchestra and Chorus. So Pat Markat's going to read off the names.
Orchestra, who's Julian Branchard for OBO. There he is. Come on up, Julian. And Band, Henry Cornoy of Bassoon. Caleb Martinez, Euphonium. Owen Terry, Clarinettes. In mixed chorus, we have Liliana Carlo. Katherine Court. Dave DeVito. Kiara Eldricken. Eva Nunes. And Avery Rue. Treble chorus, Sophie Bettencourt. Gianna Cato. Violet Caparco. Adriana Mello. Sienna Pollard. Riley Shields. So Riley. Guitar Ensemble, Julian Branchard. And Katherine Court, who's not here. And PMS also had five, six-grade students participate in the Elementary All-State Chorus. Abigail Atunes. Juliana Lemieux. Olivia Mooney. Anastasia Sedzik. I know I saw Anastasia. And Ariana Stevens.
Congratulations, PMS. Okay. Now a big one. Cheerleaders. They had a tremendous year. Is Meg here? Oh, I thought she was flying back in. Oh, all right. Who are they? Okay, so let me go over all the accomplishments. Sportsmanship Award, and that's probably, I mean, I'm glad you're state championship, but we take great, great pride when you get the sportsmanship award, so congratulations. Coach of the Year Award, ended up fifth in New England, out of all the teams in New England. Varsity Rhode Island State Champions. And JV State Champions. We have First Team All-State, Eve Dexter. Is she here?
Allstate. Okay, I don't know if I got your name first. Can you just stand here for a second?
Okay. Second Team, Jenna Lowell. All-division First Team, Eve Dexter and Jenna Lowell. Lorelei Letty. And Morgan Jiner. All, they were All-division Second Team, and very cool All-Academic, Hannah Violet. Isabella Vick. Alex Rockliff. And Hayden Doyle. Incredible season. So Dr. Plaza, can you help with this? There's an awful lot. Okay, so we'll go. So Taylor Mooney. State Champion. Victoria Williams. She's coming. Congratulations, Victoria. Isabella Vick. I'm going to see her Friday. Hayden Doyle. Asgard Powers. Scarlett Hual. Hannah Violet. Gianna Bruno. Maddie Medeiris. Ava. Rizou. I didn't even say her. Macy Leon. Justina Kerel. Kerel. As long as they get the first. Cheyenne. Cheyenne Hore. Morgan Jiner. Francesca Rotundo. Eve Dexter. Allstate, congratulations. Sarah Brown. Lorelei Letty. Oh, damn favorite. Michaela. What is it? Yuric. Heather Widel. Jenna Lowell. Alex Rockliff. Sydney Estrella. Lila Leon. Big white. You didn't guys didn't get one. We'll get your one, we promise. Congratu-- there's nobody sitting here that we missed, right? Did everybody get a certificate from cheerleading? All right, congratulations, ladies. A PMS kid that was late and just came in, Katherine Court. All right, on to track and field. This young man owns indoor track state champion, Pontigan City Record in the 1,000 meter, indoor track Pontigan City School Record in the 600 meter, 800 meter, and for 1,500 meter. It is my pleasure to introduce to you the best track and field kid we got, Jeremy Rowe. And lastly, tonight, I'm going to ask this young lady to join me up here, just so you can watch her turn a million different colors. This, ladies and gentlemen, is Jaina Yakelcheck. She is our 2023-24 Gatorade Rhode Island Girls Basketball Player of the Year. It's the first time in Pontigan City Girls Basketball history that a player has earned honors from Gatorade, and she is only the fourth athlete in Pontigan City history to earn Gatorade honors. Jaina averaged more than 16 points, 4.7 rebounds, I don't know how you get half, I mean, .7 rebounds, and more than three steals per game, and this year she surpassed 1,000 career points. She is a three-time First Team All-Stater, two-time State Champion. Jaina is the very, very best in Rhode Island. And as exceptional as Jaina's basketball skills are, and which they are, Jaina is even more exceptional person. She is a member of the Rhode Island Department of Education Student Advisory Council. She is a volunteer in my TOPPS Basketball and Soccer Program, a member of the State Championship Unified Volleyball Team, and a member of the Girls for Cross Team as well. Jaina has donated her time to the National Education Association Rhode Island's Gingerbread Express, which helps families in need around the holiday season. Mr. and Mrs. Yakelcheck, you did a hell of a job.
And that concludes the fun part of the school committee meeting. All right, so Sid, Greg is here, so everybody's here. We're going to move cost sharing, we're going to move up number 11. Okay. Did you hear me regardless? Dave, did you hear me? All right, good. So we're going to go on to number 11, cost share and shared positions. Mr. Fittrelli is here from the Gloucester School Committee Attorney to discuss positions to be shared with them.
All right, so over the past several days, Attorney Fittrelli and I have had several conversations regarding the fact that Gloucester needs and wants both Steve and Gary to support at Gloucester because they have no, they have, do have no maintenance at all right now in Gloucester. We talked about certain things, and one of the things that we talked about just getting us through the year and getting us through June, May, and June. That's what, that's what the real problem is right now. And then after May and June, we can sit and talk about probably possibly doing a cost share or something like that. So, yeah, I had this conversation. We've got to figure out a way if the regional committee will agree to, to like an amendment to their contracts or just an MOA between them or something that Greg and I will develop so that they can both work here at the region and they are, they have already worked in Gloucester because of the cost share arrangement.
Well, essentially, that's what it always was. It was always all three districts. It was up until two years ago, I believe, that Gloucester backed out of the cost share. Sophie, I mean, 10 years I went on the committee, and I know prior to that, it was always shared among the three districts.
So Attorney Fittrelli has an idea of how we can get through May and June, so that's all we're talking about right now is May and June.
Okay.
Then we sit down and work out some kind of a cost share for next year if it stays up.
Well, can't we just do a cost share for six weeks anyway? Greg?
Sure.
Because their contract isn't up. It's opening up their contract to make an adjustments to it.
And again, we want, we want to let, we don't, you don't give them any extra money. We don't really give them, they're not going to come to Gloucester. Right now Gloucester are in a mess. We're not saying we give them extra money after June, because after June, what we do is we look at the contracts, we'll see how much time they spend in Gloucester, how much time they spend in Foster, how much time they spend in the region, and do the breakout of cost share that we used to have prior to, in the last May and June meeting. So we're going to, we're going to work on it. Greg and I agreed we'll work on it after, you know, after this year is done July 1st. But somehow, you're in a bind in Gloucester. They can help you. They're not going to come and help you if you don't give them a little bit of something. So to get Gloucester through it, to make them understand that it's got into Gloucester, there's going to be a cost share agreement, Greg and I talked about it and we recommended it, it's like $8,000.
Yes, for six weeks. I just think, and I get it, and Gloucester's in a bind, and I, I will support whatever you guys need, and I totally get it. My only concern is, I, I sit here and I represent the taxpayers and the students, and I just feel that no matter how you cut it, a work week is a work week, and no matter, someone is going to be getting less time, whether the region or Foster. They can't be two places at once or three places at once. So someone is going to be getting less time, which is why the cost share existed. So I just feel, I am just going to share my--
Shelley, we're, we're kicking in the 8,000. It's not affecting you.
No, 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 it is affecting me, because we pay $34,000 for them. That is our cost share. So we're not getting any less money, even though we will be getting less time.
Shelley, it's six weeks.
No, that's what I'm saying. I said, Mark, I am going to agree with this, but I think there should be, region should be paying less, and the Foster should be paying less.
For six weeks?
Not in July.
In Ju-- this is, this is the July conversation.
Well, not really, because for six weeks, we're going to be getting less time, too. We have a lot going on in Foster. We have playgrounds, we have PFAS, we have a lot going on in Foster. So no matter how you cut it, they're going to be, you cannot be two places at once. They are going to be around less in either the region or in Foster. So, yeah, I am saying for six weeks, but I will do whatever you need to do because I know you need them. But, go ahead, Brendan.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I, my question was going to be for Renee, is that do you feel that the staff members have the bandwidth to provide this added service to Gloucester for the next six weeks? Is there--
I, I think that they have both, not that I think--
They'll figure it out.
--had several conversations, they both agreed that they're going to do what they, what they want to do. Gary used to work in Gloucester, so he knows the needs right now, and I think it would serve some students and make sure that the buildings, that you don't lose what, what you're up. They have both said yes for May and June to see what it is. And I think that there's also, none of these jobs, and I know you all agree, are seven to three, eight to four, nine to five. They're not. So if they feel that they can do this, it's set into it, give them a chance to do it, and reevaluate it. They both agree, yes.
And I think Shelley's concerns are quite valid, though, right? Like, the expectation would be that the performance at, you know, both the region, Foster, you know, it's a conservative tree, it's really all nonviolence, and should be as Gloucesters do, but that that, the performance won't drop off in those places.
You have committed workers--
Yeah, I, yep.
--committed people who work for you in the--
Thousand percent.
Yes.
It's just, there's a sensitivity there to that, that we want to make sure that we're not overextending people, and we're not going to leave Gloucester behind, I mean--
No, exactly, so we're not saying that--
Echo what Shelley's saying there, that you guys need help, we'll do it, but they can only work so much before they get burnt out, too, right?
And there's still, and you can only work so much during the day, because the nighttime calls after hours, you're not doing, like, the after-hours calls will be like if there's an emergency or something happens at the school. You're not meeting up with contractors at night, you're not meeting up with your employees at night to check on them, you're doing all that during the day, so now they have five schools. So that's my concern. When we, when Gloucester bowed out and Renee reached out to me two years ago about doing the cost share for Foster, if I wanted to continue it, and she says, "It's going to be more money because it's only the two districts now doing it." So when I said, "Yes, that's fine," because it'll be, I was speaking to the committee, because I said, "Well, it should get more attention." So we're paying more money than we did three years ago because we had a higher share. So the fact that we're paying the same share, but no matter how you cut it, you're going to get less time.
Shelley, I, I hear what you're saying.
I know.
And that's, Greg and I agree with you that come July--
Right.
Yes, it's a valid concern.
--we'll put, like, this to their salary, and what, if it continues, what Gloucester will pay X amount of dollars--
That's true.
Gloucester will pay X amount of dollars to be-- We will make them know you have to do what you need.
We don't know.
Yeah, well, I think, I think, I was very confident that he feels that he can only work on things like this kind of things, you know, they're going to be a separate chaos. I, I'm sure I needed, you know, this, you know, perspective of Gloucester. The only thing I see, the only thing where Gloucester knew was, well, just some, some right commission could allow that--
Yes, like an MOA.
A typical contract--
Because of workman's comp, because we're the main contractor, you have to sub them out, so they have to, workman's compensation is the other--
So they have to have a, a leave and a, a, so that's, that's basically-- Well, it's not, it's not, it's not worded that way, but all of these contracts have the language of the people.
Yeah.
Because they're on call all the time, so you can't take a call, you can't take a job someplace else because you're on call. It's salary.
Your, your, would you hire a salary employer like that? If that employee expects to have a, a job, that's all, that's all employees are at. No, so for this purpose, for our purpose--
This is just--
We are, they're going to be Gloucester.
For June and July?
For June and July, because they will be, they're going to pay with a salary, and that people pay all of the taxes and stuff, that will be our Gloucester, that money, $8,000, you're not going to pay--
No.
So then it's got into July first, then we'll do the cost share, we'll be on it.
So do you have a motion that you would like, because there's nothing in our motion packet? What would you, is it an MOA? What are we agreeing, so I understand what we're agreeing to, but how do you want us to word it?
Just recognizing that here, allowing T-Vest, Gary Grass, to work Gloucester's group, or today, who dream, or, so that we can pack on here, one time.
For the sum of $8,000 total?
No.
Oh, that doesn't matter, okay.
That's up to them.
Okay.
You're just authorizing them to do that work and not, sort of, and not in violation of your contract.
So moved, okay, second.
So Greg, so then Gloucester should do again?
No, so just, so what we did in Gloucester was, we authorized new act to execute the contract upon, so we've already--
Okay. So there was-- Okay, so there was, there was a motion, a second, any more discussion?
Or is it Gloucester? Is it on, on next?
Yes.
I think so.
Ready or not.
If, whatever we're gonna do. Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions. Thank you Greg for coming this evening, I appreciate it. Approval of meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the open meeting on April ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Move to approve the minutes of the executive session meeting on April ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, field trip request.
Move to approve the overnight field trip as presented in the packet.
Second. Any discussion about this?
I'm asking for any self-help on the meeting.
No.
I'm ready.
Nope, no.
I'm ready.
All right. No discussion, no other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Uh, we're going to be tabling eight. Number nine. Yeah, I gotta do nine A, this is what Angela brought, yeah. Nine A, the leave of absences, can I please have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the leave of absences as presented in the packet.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Going to table D, table B.
Madam Chair, I would just also like to congratulate Mary St Pierre on her retirement. I actually did have her as a high school teacher, so I wanna say thank you to her and for all of her wonderful service to the school. She was a wonderful teacher and she will be missed, and I just wanna say thank you for her service to this district.
There's echoed, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, um, ten. Settlement agreement.
All right, so this is a settlement agreement that you all received after the last meeting. It's in your packet, it's assigned agreement now, and I'm asking you.
Move to approve the administrative settlement agreement as presented in the packet.
Second. Any discussion about the settlement agreement? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Approval of monthly bills.
Move to approve the monthly bills dated April one to April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of one million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Finance update. For the month of April. Is there anything that anyone would like to ask Anne Gudrow? Anne, is it just Anne, or is it, what was the first? Anne, all right, okay, I didn't want to butcher the last name too. Gudrow. Gudrow, okay. Does anybody have any questions? Is there anything that you feel that you should add, or are we good?
If anyone has any questions.
All right. Thank you for everything, appreciate you stepping to those shoes. Capital projects update. Electric city, sorry, electric, thank you.
I make a motion to approve first point power contract as presented in the packet.
Any discussion about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Now capital projects. Brendan, do you wanna talk about this?
Yes, yes, I do. I'd like to, we're gonna start with the capital projects though, so those are, those are the quicker ones.
All right, so the bids.
Yeah. This one, I'll, I'll take care of the first one. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the pond bid by Dubon Construction for.
One oh four.
Well, one hundred and four thousand dollars plus the additional twenty-four thousand dollars, which remain in the grant, which can be used towards alternate three, as presented in the packet.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this already? Brendan, why don't you just talk further?
The reason for that is, we, we did go back out to bid for this project, because the original bids were too high. We gave them several deduct alternates. We are able to, the, the bids came back lower with the, the alternates accepted. We are able to put back in one of the alternates and a portion of a second alternate, but not the full portion of that second alternate. However, we, we do wish to expend the entirety of the grant. So what we're trying to do here is to allow our administrative team to.
Flexibility?
Have some flexibility to at least incorporate a portion of that alternate, or, or some improvement of this project into the final product. Or we just, the money is not used, so it's, it's a grant.
It's a grant, yes, we use it, good. Thank you for that. I'm glad they came in lower, that's awesome. Any other questions on the pond bid? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
All right.
Approval of central office HVAC.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the HVAC AC bid by Carjon for fifty-five thousand dollars, one, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars as presented in the packet.
Second.
Second, this is in the amended motions page.
Yep.
That you all have. This is to replace the air handlers that are in the administrative wing. It, it's work that needs to be done. That's one of the spaces in the building that is used all year round. You know, the whole building is, but there in particular. And it's, it's work that we just need to do, the, the system does not function as is. This was the lowest of the three bids.
Out of curiosity, things like HVAC, is that reimbursable through?
I believe a portion of this is, but I defer to Renee.
Yeah, I know. There's six of them, just so you know, there's six of them.
And, and just for the record too, we did talk about asking for, like, make sure we have maintenance and cleaning included in this, like, at least five years' worth of something. You get some.
You beat me to it.
We can do with it, yeah.
Right?
That's important.
Yeah, contract, yeah.
And any, any other discussion? Bless you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions.
All right. Number three. C.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the flooring bid by Rujuri Brothers for twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars as presented in the packet.
Second.
This is to replace the carpeting within a portion of the administrative wing. It, it's, the carpeting is old and there's some issues of, there's some health issues. It, it needs to be replaced. It will be going back with something that is less absorptive of moisture, so more of a VCT system, so like a tile.
Are there any mold issues or anything like that that they have to?
They will be doing any required cleanup as part of the carpet removal, is probably the way I would phrase it on the record.
Are they taking all the carpet out? Why don't we, how much more carpet is there that we're not taking out then? Is that an issue?
It's, so this is not the business office side, this is like the superintendent side.
Yes, yeah.
I believe it's the entirety of that space they're putting in.
Oh, so that's the whole section?
Yeah, yeah, it's not.
So I'm like, I thought it was a port, you said a portion of it.
I'm sorry, when I meant a portion, it's, it's the one side of the corridor.
Okay, so I didn't know if both sides.
There's an issue there.
Is the other side fine?
I think it's been checked, but.
Okay, good, okay. All right, thank you. All right, I'm sorry, any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions.
So sixteen, I feel like should go after seventeen here.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
I agree, all right, so why don't, we'll, we'll come back to that Brendan, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so the athletic complex facility bond.
Okay, so I think there's a couple of different things that we're going to do here. This first part, I think we just need to discuss what the status is of that particular bond. And then there's a resolution that's in your packet too. So we met as a capital projects committee earlier today, and we've met a few times prior to this, to discuss what would be a large request from the community. In your packet, you're going to see a resolution which is essentially requesting approval of a twenty million dollar bond from the residents of the citizens taxpayers of Foster and Gloucester. Included in that bond are improvements to the athletic complex, that's the facilities themselves at the high school. And some of the infrastructure that surrounds it, some of the smaller buildings, outbuildings, things like that. As well as for some much-needed capital improvements to both the high school and middle school. Breaking them into two pieces, we're estimating that the athletic piece would be in the neighborhood of eight million dollars. That's based upon preliminary work that's been done to this point to help inform the committee. Should we move forward, we would look for more information, more presentations, so that we have a little bit more clear picture as to what we would be discussing, approving and all of that. The remaining twelve million dollars would be allocated to a variety of much-needed capital improvements throughout both buildings. The high school is older, the middle school is thought of as new, but the reality is, it's approaching the point in its life where a lot of the systems that are there very much need to be replaced or reworked, or they're all gonna go at once. If you might, just give me two seconds to go through what we're talking about for those particular projects, I think it would just help this group. Just give me a moment if I may. Well, I can, I can go. So the, the, there's basically five, five items that we're talking about for the capital improvement side of it. I think everyone's generally familiar with the athletic side. The first would be security upgrades to both schools. That would be not specifically cameras, but locks, sensors, and it's essentially, you know, making sure that everything that allows people in and out of the buildings and, and sensitive spaces within the buildings is working with one another current and meets modern standards. That's something that has been identified as a priority for the district for some time, and this is just funding that. The second one is HVAC improvements, so that's air handlers, heating, cooling for both schools. We are not really clear on what we would be recommending there yet. The building team is pursuing a variety of grants through the state and through other stakeholders that might swing the desired systems in one direction or another and offset the costs significantly. So I think that would inform what the total cost would be out of this bond, but it could be anything from added solar, it could be geothermal, it could be an alternative fuel to what we're currently or were previously using, which was the wood chips to heat both of the buildings. It's worth noting with that, that, that is a, a system that we've discussed here and I think is known that those, those systems are in distress. They're on their last legs, and it's something that we do need to take action on, either through bond or through some other means to address, to make sure that these buildings are both warm and cold when needed. The third item that would be included in there would be building envelope improvements. That would be roofing, insulation above the roof and windows. The scope of that would be defined in part by the HVAC improvements and in part by a needs assessment that would be done should we move forward with this. The next part would be paving and basically grounds improvements at both building. That's something that you can probably detect as needed just by driving in, but it was also identified as part of a safety evaluation, particularly of the middle school, that there's a lot of work that needs to be done there to improve safety for students and pedestrians that are wandering, or I shouldn't say wandering, but traveling around those campuses. Did I leave any of the items out? Okay. That's. I know, I know, I'm gonna, I'll open my other. Security?
Oh, electrical. With the HVAC.
Yeah, I lumped, I think I lumped roof and windows. So it was like four and a half. Yeah, yeah.
But they're very, no matter how you cut it, they're big, they're very major, major repairs and important.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Wait, which, which item is this? Is this seventeen or eighteen?
I think this is more of like a.
The bond.
A summary before we get to the bond itself.
This is seventeen, this is seventeen. Athletic complex facility bound, where he's giving us an update, because we're doing that before we go to sixteen, approves the financial advisor.
Gotcha.
Because Brendan said he wanted to move, he wants, because seventeen.
I have two questions. Are you done?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Who picked twenty million?
That was done by the committee as a whole. So we know, we have a reasonable number from the estimates that were done for the, the athletic complex upgrades, that's six to eight. And we do think that that, by the time this were to move forward, would probably be slightly higher, just by the nature of these things. We do have order of magnitude prices for some of those other items too. And the thought was that that would be roughly where it would land. And we had to, we had to pick a number that was really where we expected it to be, and that we will basically backfill it with the design afterwards. What that committee also discussed is that we need not spend the entirety of it, right? We can, we can always.
Spend less.
Spend less, but we can't really go back for, for more.
Because like Foster, for instance, we're in a pickle, because we approved it, and it was also pre-COVID, but we're, we don't have enough money to build our police station.
Okay.
So that's why.
And second, second question is, as part of this approval for the bond, are we approving when it's going out?
I think we should have a general plan, so yes.
I think we were originally talking about, originally when we discussed it, it was either gonna be at a financial meeting, or it was gonna be on the November ballot, because it was a presidential year. So that's what the discussion was when we had this a couple of months ago.
The, the resolution is geared towards November of this year.
All right.
Which I think is what you're asking.
Yeah, because I don't think we should.
Yeah, well, we should get to that item first.
I was gonna say, oh, I thought we were on the item.
We're almost there, but yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's fine, Mark, talk away.
I was gonna say, I don't think it should be on the November ballot.
You don't think it should?
No, it's gonna fail. And that's because we, the town is asking for police renovations, which is a lot of money. I think, from what I understand, this work wouldn't be done until middle of next year anyways, so I think we could have a special election maybe in the early spring for this, but.
You have to get people lined up though, don't you?
Yeah, but I'm saying, I, I don't think it will not, not a fortune teller, but it will not pass in the November election, especially twenty million dollars. I was, I thought we were like, looking at like six million, like.
Sure. So there's two parts to this. One is the bond council resolution, which would be to basically move forward with putting this on the ballot in November as currently written. The second part would be to procure the services of a financial advisor. There's, there's two in the state that basically assist with this sort of public bonding. They would help us understand what the actual cost would be, what, what the rate would be, what, what we can get a bond for. What the terms would be if it's twenty years, thirty years, and what the cost per household would be, to make it a little bit more, you, because you hear twenty mil, it's a huge number, it's a big ask, no doubt about it. But it would break it down into what it would cost for taxpayer. The, the other part I just wanna add, because this is one of those things that comes up whenever, whenever you're asking the public for money, it's a big deal. It should be, we take it very seriously, everyone does, I get it. But there's, none of these things we're talking about are like, like luxury items, you know? Like, there's no no-cost item. These things aren't gonna get cheaper, they need to get done, and putting them off does put us at risk to what we're challenged to do in, in, in these seats, you know?
Like that heat, the heat is a huge problem. The amount of money that we're spending on heat, because we only have the one furnace that works and it's going all the way down to the athletic area, I get, so I know what's going on, but Aaron, I'm sorry, you had your hand up, I apologize.
No, it's all good, because I agree with Mark, but also, I actually lost my train of thought, you can just come back to me. I lost it already.
I, my only, and I get what both you were coming from, I completely get it, I do, but my, our, when I sit here, my responsibility is to the school, is to this district and these kids and this, that's what our responsibility here is to.
Well, I think it's irresponsible to ask for twenty million. I don't think it will pass.
But that's what the, so then if they wanna change the bond and ask for that, but is there things that you don't need, I mean, like.
Are these all set, are these all set one items? Like, are these like all on that list?
They're all, like Brendan said, none of them are luxury. These are all things that are needed. Aaron?
Now I remember.
I'm thinking there's something that could possibly be right now rating higher than what, if she talks about the athletic, she would see a model, one model, two model, three, like, you know, here's like a pretty near one, here's a, a nice one.
To see if we can get it cheaper, so instead of doing artificial turf, maybe real turf.
Instead of athletic, maybe not eight to ten of them, maybe get that down to six or seven.
Yeah, I think it's, it's six to eight now, I believe there's like a, a building in there, right? Like, that can come out. There is stuff that we can do. We are regarding athletics, that's an interesting one too, because I, I like sports, sports are great, but like, I'm not a super sports guy with this stuff. I think it's a part of the whole educational package, but it's not, they'll be, we also here, sitting here, need to accept that. We tuition in a lot of kids, right? And some of them come here.
For sports.
For sports, or that's the driving factor. One of the biggest communities that we tuition in from is Situate. Situate has not had a sports complex in like three or four years, which has probably helped that. They have now a brandy-dandy new sports complex that they just opened, which could turn the table the other way, right? So like, there's the risk, not just in the program that we're offering to our kids here athletically, but also the risk of us draining some of that. What, what is our, our income here? I mean, it's, there's, there's a lot of different pieces to it. And if we don't do something, I mean, that was identified as something that we don't know that we can keep that going for much longer before it gets like decertified or whatever, whatever the technical term for it is.
And I gotta be honest with you, what, I'm sorry, Aaron, did it come to you?
It did.
All right, so go.
So, just a few things. One, the bond council already said we're late to the eight ball, that we should have been doing this previously. So the thing is, if we're rushing, we're rushing, we're rushing, we're gonna miss something.
The, the, just.
Can I just finish?
No, no.
Let me finish.
But what you just said is not correct, Aaron.
We heard it from Mary Ann.
The bond council did not say we were late, the bond council said we had to move with. The bond council did not say we were late, the bond council said we had to move with purpose.
She said we were late.
She did not say we were late.
Well, then again, I wasn't at the meeting, so that's another thing.
I just want to be clear.
So, can I finish now, Brendan?
Yes.
Please, thank you. So, when would, the work would start late, correct? It would start when, in June, July, correct, in order to change the fields? Wouldn't that already hinder our athletics as it is anyway, where we wouldn't be able to do fo- football, soccer, lacrosse?
I was, there's no good time to do a field replacement, no matter what you do, it's a one-year project.
So then why don't we just wait until April and do a special election? What's the difference between six months? Again, we've been putting Band-Aids for the past few years on these issues. What's one, what's a few more months?
But the whole thing is, so, all right, because you lose a year, to be honest with you, Aaron, you lose a year. Willie, is that his name? I'm, I wanna butcher it, Willie, he's the town council?
Will.
Will, Will Worthy, thank you, Will, yeah. Will, so Will called me, and he, because he asked me, he wanted us to have a joint meeting, and then I guess that ends, because he never called me back. And he did say, he goes, because he asked me to ta, I said, no, it's my responsibility to take care of this, the building and, and the, for the kids, like, like Brendan said, I'm concerned about the sports, and he goes, I will tell you, he goes, I'm a, he said that he's a volunteer, he helps with football.
Yeah, he's got, they, they have a bunch of kids.
They have, he helps with football, and he said the football field is absolutely horrible. He goes, it's, it's a safety hazard, it's dangerous. So he's admitting to me, like, because I'm not on the football field, I don't know anything about the football field. He's telling me how bad it is, he's telling me that it's terrible, but he just says, both of them will, he goes, I'm gonna be honest with you, he goes, I'm calling you because selfishly, if you put yours on and we put ours on, they're not gonna pass. They'll both fail, he goes, but if we put ours on, we'll win. So it's like, it's kind of crappy, to be honest with you, that they win and we don't. You know, I just find that kind of crappy.
But then again, if we both put them on, we both lose.
But, but let, they've already voted down our police station once, so that they're gonna see it on the ballot again, to piss off people. So let that happen, and it must now be associated with it, then after the financial town meeting, we can
I, I just think, is, is there a legal thing though, because it's so much money?
It cannot, it cannot go to a financial town meeting.
But it can have a special election.
It has to go to an election where vote is put on and vote.
It, it can be a, a special election.
Can, but you've got, remember, in order to do a special election, uh, that maybe we do need to do a joint meeting with the town councils to say, we will hold off from the November if you will agree to work with us for a special election for ours, so that we can, um, so that we can go to a special election. So
Do we need their, I'm sorry, Mary Ann, do we need their help for a special election? What do we need their help for?
All right, we need their support, because it costs money, remember, to do an election.
Oh.
They have to have those, they have to open up
Yes. And so that's the whole thing about putting them in November ballot, all that was already taking place, it was just
Schools are closed, yeah.
If you do November ballot, it's no extra money.
But if we just, it doesn't have to close the schools, we could have it at the senior center.
You can.
Yeah, we could have it.
But we can
But I, I like your idea.
Isaac, thank you. Yeah, because our, have you, you don't go to our town, yes. Our towns are small. Yeah, it's, there's no, we'd have to close school.
Maybe we need to meet with the two towns and say, will you support a special election if you're not going to agree to November?
Because, I mean, and I get what everybody's saying, it's just, like, we're told how bad it is, and we're told, and we know how bad it is.
We know.
We know what has to be done, and I just think it's not fair to the taxpayers, well, the, the voters. I mean, it's a big election, so that's when you're gonna get the most turnout.
If it's not gonna pass in November, it's not gonna pass in April, it's not gonna pass the fall.
No, it will.
It's a competing one, you're absolutely right, it's not gonna pass, but if we wait a little bit.
And all electoral history also show that if you have two bonds or more on the ballot, they will both fail, especially in conservative districts. Look at what happened in North Kingstown, look at what happened at Charahoe. In those districts, they put out special elections and they failed in terms of the fact that they were in the small districts, okay? I think either way, even for the North Kingstown election, that was in the general election, and that still failed. So I think that if we have all bonds all at the same time, people are gonna say they're fed up, they're not gonna do it, and when it fails, it failed, and then we're stuck for another couple of years.
I'll tell you, morally speaking, like, I'm, I'm sitting on a committee where our staff has told us that there's some systems here that they, they're in critical need of replacement, one way or another. There's stuff that needs to be done, that's millions and millions of dollars.
So I have a question to that, Brendan, which is really, you know, I'm on Capitol with you and I hear your concern and urgency. Do we have any funds in an emergency contingency fund if any of those systems fail to, to make those repairs? Where would we be?
That's the problem.
Would we have to close a school?
I don't know.
In Capitol?
How much do you have though, Renee, not, not a couple million, do you have that much? Because that's, but then we're depleted.
And what I'm hearing everybody say is that we're not, I think we're all in favor, I'm not sure exactly sure if we're all in favor of the twenty, but we're all in favor of going out to bond, we're just not all in favor of going out to bond in November.
The timing.
Right, and it might just be that we don't have enough information, like, if it fails, are we able to bring it back again?
We can bring it back every year, you know?
We can bring it back, can we bring it back in a couple of months?
Can you keep having special elections?
Yeah, you can't do special, but you can put it on the ballot.
If it was on the November ballot and it failed, hypothetically, could we put it on in March? Could you put it on in February?
It'd be dependent on our legislators being willing to put it up.
Like, I guarantee the police stations going down, because they voted it down in the last election. People are gonna see it back on and say, what happened, my vote didn't count last night, we said no.
Why on earth aren't we pressuring them then?
They're gonna go down too, and then they don't wanna see it again.
But I don't
If, if our Gloucester School Committee colleagues are convinced that that ballot initiative is going to fail, and assuming that we all are on the same page, that some of this work is really time-sensitive, why aren't we all on the horn with Gloucester Town Council, be like, can you put this off, like? I, I, like, so why is this pressure on us? Because I'll tell you what, like, if the boilers aren't working here, like, November of twenty-five, and it's like, how'd that happen? We're all
And so that's, do you think they're gonna remember this?
I, I get it, but like, that, this pressure should be happening here.
Because I think we're gonna be the ones saying that we, we were negligent, we didn't take care of our building, because that's our responsibility. We were negligent.
I get it all, okay? We got an elementary school with the rotten boiler, we got rotten water, and yes, we have been talking tremendous amount of time with the Gloucester Town Council for the last few months.
Can we do it in December then? Can we do a special meeting in December?
Yes, we can have a special election, I know that for sure.
They're the ones calling us, telling us
We're gonna have a November election.
I'm not saying the month, but I'm saying we can have it, I don't know
I just don't, because I don't wanna put it off, I don't want, if I, all right, if we
Do we have a February school vacation, do we have an April vacation where school is closed and we can have a
That's true.
I mean, but then, then half of the people we really want to show up probably won't be around.
Right.
You know?
Like the parents.
Selfishly.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, that's the whole thing, like, if we, if we push it and we advocate the importance of this February election, I don't honestly believe it's gonna fail, I know that you guys, because you think, you really think it'll fail.
Yes.
I, I, I've been on this committee for a very long time, it has never been this bad, ever. If, we just need, on May twenty-first, to get our budget passed and let stuff calm down. If we start now, like, Will Worthy already called you.
Yeah.
Okay, be real adamant, they don't want us going out to bond at the same time. All it's gonna do is increase any animosity, it's
But I told him, just, I did tell him
We all know that a boiler can go, that, I mean, that's
I just, I did tell him, I said, I said, I'm not, I said, I'm not gonna back down, I said, the committee chooses to, that's on them. I said, but I have a responsibility to the school and taking care of the facilities, and I said,
It's not backing down
That you're telling us to drop ours and you're not dropping yours, but I told you.
It's not backing down, it's not that we're not ever, we're all in favor of going out to bond and getting the place fixed. I just think we need to wait a short period of time, because it'll fail, and if it fails, then it will continuously
What makes you think it's gonna pass in April though, if it fails in November, you know?
Because then, like you said
Everybody calms down.
Yeah, and you're dick, you, you have more, then who's gonna show up to vote, especially if we don't have it on school vacation?
I think people are pissed either way. You know, if we can't make a compelling case to fix these things now, then I don't think five months changes it.
Yeah, no, like
Were you saying something?
Brendan, Aaron, what were you saying?
So, also, I'm not sure if the rest of the committee members know, other than Gloucester, but right now, Gloucester's right now in a deficit. How is that gonna look when we ask for twenty million dollars even for a regional bond, when they see us that put it forward? I'm sorry, but probably they're gonna vote no on that because of the fact that unfortunately we weren't able to handle up at the Gloucester level. Again, nothing, you know, just saying what they are probably thinking, because again, they're not too happy about us having a half a million dollar deficit.
Well, they're the ones that take over your finance department.
I understand that, but still, it looks bad on us, and that's going to come back to haunt us in the long run. So, you know what, if you all decide to do this, let's try to do a vote and see what happens and let the cards fall as they may.
I just, it's, I mean, I understand
And see what happens with this vote.
Who revised them out?
Yeah, I like that question.
Yeah, I swear to God, I, I, no, I feel like, I feel like two months ago, it was like athletic bond for two million dollars, or something like that.
No, this is very consistent.
All right, yeah, five to six, but now we're talking twenty.
Yes, no, because then
Commit, the capital, whatever, project committee should, I think they should be disenthe, you know, I don't think we as
Oh, oh. Yeah, that, that number didn't change.
Both are a conservative amount in the first place, that's a good question.
Brendan, we didn't discuss it, you said the
No, two months ago we did, we absolutely did, two months ago.
It was
Yeah.
We had a twenty.
Well, because what happened is when they first were talking about the athletic fields, it was
It wasn't, the bond council is the one that said the twenty.
Well, we talked about it, but it was an informed number.
Right, another six or eight, so, I mean, at the highest, it would be like fifteen, sixteen.
I think we were talking fifteen, not twenty.
I just think like, it's, we're giving it the best chance to succeed by doing it separately, and if we, if it votes down in November and then we put it back in April, that's like the presidential election, like, not going our way, so then we have it again in April. Like, the whole point of a vote is that you vote for something. If it fails, it fails.
I just, and I know
You know what I'm saying, Shelley, like, you have to do it once, one good, you know?
Completely get it, and I complete, it's just, it doesn't make it less crappy.
I know, but
It doesn't make it, like, it doesn't make a pill easier to swallow, it's just, I know that the building needs all these repairs, I know, like, it's like you said, what happens
We all know, we do know.
But Shelley, from November to April, it's what, six months? Less than five months?
But then we have, but then, so instead of starting it, I know, okay.
Do you know what I mean? Like, it's not a full year, it's not two years, it's literally five or six months.
We literally have our building manager out trying to shake grants out. He needs matching funds to pay for some of those things. So say, I, I'm just hypothesizing here too, maybe I'm making it up. Say he finds a million dollars that Rhode Island Energy is willing to pony up for something, and we're like, oh, wait, we don't, actually, we haven't approved the project. I mean, I don't know. I mean, personally, I, I'm going to make the motion to approve it as presented, and I'm, however it falls, it falls, but morally, I think it's the right thing to do, I think we've had these needs identified, and if someone else wants to make an alternate motion after that, should it not fail? So be it, but my job as sitting on this committee is to identify needs that have been brought to our attention, dire needs in some of these instances, and to put forward the best possible outcome for the kids, staff, and all of the faculty here. And that's it. Make another one afterwards, it's fine.
I just want you to consider a special election rather than the November.
That can be done afterwards, if, should it fail, by all means, make another one.
Can you make the motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bond council resolution as presented in the packet with minor modifications that probably don't matter at this point, to move the word athletic further up into it, so, just, if it goes that way, I can clarify.
Second.
May I ask for a roll call vote, just to make sure, because I think that if we all vote, you know, it might be
Go ahead, Aaron, start.
No.
No.
Aye.
Yes.
No. No.
No. Yes.
No.
So motion fails. Does anybody wanna make an alternate motion?
I would, or
Anybody?
I make a motion to approve the bond council resolution to put it towards a special election after meeting with both town councils of Gloucester and Gloucester.
Can we add to that, that we continue the process?
And to continue the process going forward.
You get, you gotta contact reps, and you gotta
Do you want, do you want
Repeat the motion?
Special elections after
Can you move?
Meeting with both town councils.
Town councils, and, and continuing the process
Of going out for a bond.
But you, but you further continue the process.
For us, can we discuss yet?
To move forward with the preparation
Yes, that's it.
Yes.
Move with the preparation of going to
To a special election? So moved.
Can we discuss now, or no?
Yes.
I think that sounds nice, but it's absolutely useless, because there's no deadlines, nothing definitive in there. So it makes everyone here feel good, like, oh, we're still acting, but not, you need to have timelines, you need to say, are we meeting with them in December? When's that special election? I, no, I'm probably not gonna support it, because I think we need to do it now. But if you don't have any deadlines, it is useless, it could be twenty twenty-eight.
I think we still need the Gloucester and Gloucester town councils.
We can't, we've gotta make, I've gotta contact both town councils tomorrow, see when we can all come together, advertise it for free to have a discussion. So I guess maybe you need to say that, um, you need to, like, we need to contact the councils within the next ninety days or something like that, because obviously we're not gonna go for November, we've got a little bit of time to get special election.
Is there a deadline to be able to go for November?
Exactly, that's, well, no.
No.
Is there a what?
A deadline to be able to put it in for November?
Yes.
What's a deadline?
Basically, no.
Right now?
We need, we need to have this resolution passed by the legislature in this session, which expires like mid-June.
Yeah.
But I think that's kind of a issue. January for a special election of where we can actually have it already.
And I, I happen to agree with a lot of people's, you know, viewpoints about how it probably will fail, but I, I think the thing that's standing out to me the most, just listening to everyone speak, is, is the fact that we do have, you know, if, if there is something that happens, we then have to explain why we didn't move forward on this. So I'd rather be on, on the side of it failing and be the one to be in a position to say, well, at least we tried, and we, you, you guys didn't pass it, I'd rather sit there. So I would just put it there out there.
But you can, putting a timeline together, I don't think is a problem. I think we should wait until the, 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 May twenty-first, where the, everybody's voting on the budget. So, they don't get all pissed off, their budget passed, then they'd be more open to listening to us.
I don't think it's about people's personal feelings, to be honest. I think it's a safety issue, and I think it's gonna be, if there's a potential, I think it's a potential, you know, for school to close, because there's no heat or water or whatever. Uh, you know, I, I honestly think people need to take their emotions and egos out of the whole process.
I understand that, and I hope that does happen, but we all know that does not happen in elections. We all know that, oh, that candidate made me angry, therefore I'm not gonna vote for that one, I'm gonna vote for the other one. We all know that when it comes to elections. So I think emotions do play a part of elections to make sure that we get the ability in order to pass something, because unfortunately, elections are based on emotions.
I, I know, and I, and I, I agree with, with Amy, I'd rather say, and I, I get it, I mean, we lost that vote, and you guys put a vote in, I just really wanna make sure that we recognize that we gotta do this sooner than later.
So your, your police station bond fails in November, what do you think the town council of Gloucester is gonna do? What do you think they're gonna do? Special election?
Brendan, they can't, because that bond, that grant can only last until the end of this year.
So say it fails, what do you think they're gonna do?
Well, we don't know, and guess what? We have a motion, we have a second, I believe, correct? Can we go to a vote, can we make a motion, please?
Yes, I was just gonna say, Kyle, would you please re-read the motion?
You had a dollar mount in it too, please?
Oh, no, I thought we were gonna
I think special elections after meeting with both town councils, is that
Yes.
Yes.
So, Aaron, your motion, special elections after meeting with both town councils, and do you process and move forward with the preparation to go and move forward with the process to put the paperwork through, move forward with the process.
But it won't go on the ballot for November, because we're not gonna make the deadline.
We're starting the process to, for a special election.
Should we put a date to that special election?
No later than Because we need
February of
Say no later than?
That's what I would
Yeah, like, no later than February of twenty twenty-five, or no later than March of twenty twenty-five.
If you say no later, that's a good idea. I think that's too soon after the first election to get discussed, usually
But I don't wanna put this off.
No, we can't put it off.
No later than April of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, April of twenty twenty-five. Yeah, April of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so is a motion?
No later than, so it could be sooner.
Could be sooner.
Depending on how fast we get the paperwork.
Can we just, before we vote, Renee, can, Renee? Oh, there you are, sorry, see you. Um, did, were you able to come up with how much money we have, in case something, like, if the boilers go?
So we have money reserved in, in.
Capital?
Projects reserve, and, but now in Capitol, we have, uh, two points.
Alright, so.
Which is dropped in the bucket.
It is, but it would, if one thing went, we would have a place to go.
As a side note, um, I am currently working on the new, which one is it? Is it the Wayland Elementary, it's a new elementary school in, in North Providence. They just put the, uh, mechanical equipment out to bid for that project. The construction drawings for the foundations aren't due for another month. The reason they did that is because the lead time for the mechanical equipment is forty-eight weeks. So, that's all great, we can have all the money in the world, but you're not gonna get it, it's about a year to get most of this stuff.
So, okay, twenty twenty-six?
Uh, maybe, that, it has to be designed, it has to be picked.
Oh, it's not like all of a sudden, like, okay, yep, I, I, I want this, let's go buy it, and we all know it's a process and a half, it takes, it's a long.
I think that, I just, it was a project, I can't remember, they blend together, but it was a school.
Alright, so you wanna do a roll call vote again?
I would.
Okay, so Aaron?
Yes.
No.
Nope.
No.
Yes. Hold on, hold on.
Slow down.
The motion is to move forward with, with the process of a special election.
No later than April.
To be held no later than April.
Yes.
The election. You said yes.
I said yes.
No, Brendan?
No.
Shelley, no.
No. Maybe yes. Yes.
Yes. No.
Yes. What is it? Is it?
Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, yeses.
No, I don't think so.
No, it's five.
Four noes, and.
Was Beth? Eileen, Pat?
Yes.
Yes, Beth, one, two, three, four, yes, you got five, five, four.
I mean, I don't even know what's left, I have Brendan?
One.
Mark, me.
Amy. Amy.
Brendan, I'm sorry.
That, you know, if maybe we can just sort of retire this conversation with the concept of, from November until maybe March or April, we're only talking about a couple more months to have them separated out. And, and, so it's not like we're kicking the can down the road a year. Brendan, I, I really feel your, your frustration, you worked so damn hard on this, on Capitol, and, and I know how you're, I, I, and only feeling your frustration, and, but I, I'm, you know, I think we're all just trying to make sure that we, the timing, you know, timing can be everything.
I appreciate that, I guess what, maybe I thought I conveyed it, I think if it doesn't stand a chance in passing in November, because we're not able to make a compelling argument for it.
Yeah.
It won't pass in April, it won't pass in November of twenty-five, won't pass however long, I, I don't think it ha- I, I agree, it doesn't make it easier if there's a competing bond, but it's, it's the project itself that we are responsible for conveying to the community how important it is, and if, if we can't sell that, if we can't make that known, then that's on us, and then we need to start whatever Plan B is, and I don't know what that is in this instance, but simply, I don't think November and April makes any difference, I think it's gonna fail on one, it's gonna fail on the other. Unless you wait a much longer time, and all we're doing is losing time on figuring out however we fix it, that's begging the state, I don't know.
Alright, the motion passed up, thank you, Pat, for that.
Thank you, Pat.
I don't know.
Brendan for, for trying, thank you. Alright, so we had, so are we not, so are we getting the financial, are we going back to sixteen, or are we not gonna do that now? I'm very confused.
I think we should go out, I, I think we should go out to bid with a financial advisor, we don't have to appoint him yet, but at least if we go out to bid, we have the, you know, packet, I mean, we're gonna need him by November, or, by April or May, so let's go out to bid, let's get it, and then let's look at it, and let me talk to the bond council as to how we proceed toward a special election. But at least if you give permission tonight to go out to bid, that's in your motion to move, to move it forward, so yes.
Okay. Okay, does someone wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the RFP for a financial advisor suggested by bond council and presented in the packet.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Alright, um, just we read it to the bond council, uh, public comment, is there any comment in the public this evening? Yes?
Hey Walt.
Walt, so nice to see you this evening.
Very official. Yeah.
Burble's putting a turf field in right now, so they're gonna be.
Burble?
Well, can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
Yeah, Burble just, uh, they're gonna be starting the field, turf field, and came in just a little under a million dollars. I don't know what you were thinking, a little under a million. Uh, Dave O'Keefe, construction is doing it, Dave was a graduate upon against at high school, so, maybe someone can get in touch with him, and he may be able to give you some.
Thank you.
Ideas on that.
What was it, Keith?
Dave O'Keefe. He graduated quite a few years ago. Yeah, I was at a couple of meetings when they were talking about the Gloucester Police Station, and, uh, they have got almost five million dollars in grants, so that's something in their favor. And they were talking at the meetings that they, uh, their architect was thinking that they were gonna come in around four percent interest on the bonds, so that's another thing you can look at, but that's gonna be a lot of money.